I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which was founded, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the prayer. Father, thank you for each and every one of the students that we're blessed to work with and for the employees who have been with our education each day. There are so many events happening in our country. We'd ask that you come forth to our hearing and provide strength to those who need it physically, spiritually, and mentally. Give us all the wisdom and guidance to make decisions that are best for kids each and every day. Amen. This is the first regular meeting in September. Uh, I was wanting to drop a page here. Hang on. And according to Board Policy 14200, at the first regular meeting in September, the board will organize by electing a chairman and vice chairman served one year terms. Now, at this time, I will open the floor to nominations for the board chair for the school year twenty-two, twenty-three.
My motion, or nominating Bobby Henderson as chairman?
Second.
Nomination second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Bobby, I will turn this over to you.
Okay, uh, so next, uh, on the agenda, we're going to elect a vice chairman, so I'll open the floor for vice chairman.
I'll elect Terry King.
Okay, the motion is made to nominate Terry King.
I'll nominate Jean Ross.
Motion made to nominate Jean Ross. Any more? Okay, in that case, we will have a roll call vote.
Okay, uh, Mr. Anderson, I'm your editor. Terry King, Bob, sorry, Carter, Ross, Chris.
King.
Henderson.
I'll Terry King.
King.
Aye.
Oak.
King.
Mr. Ross.
Second.
Three for King.
Thank God, first thing. And I appreciate California's confidence. I'll try my best to continue to, uh, lead this board in the right direction. So the next on our agenda is our, I mean, is our agenda approval, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like to approve the agenda.
Motion made by Mr. King.
Second.
Second by Reverend Chris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is our consent agenda. There's only one thing in there which is amended from last month, so if y'all don't want to pull that out, then we'll just go ahead and entertain a motion for that. Motion made by Miss Ayler.
Second.
Second by Reverend Chris. And of course, there's no discussion on the consent agenda, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have our nepotism policy. And to save a little bit of time and keep everybody from, uh, reading it, uh, if nobody has any objections, I will read the declaration, then we'll just do a roll call. And if, uh, what applies to you or not, just, I'll prefer to say yes, but if you... If you say no, it doesn't apply to you, then, you know, who's to say? You don't have, you don't have somebody in the school system and you're still, you're hoping no, because you're not going to apply by the declaration, so, um, the declaration is because I have relatives or relative who are informed by the Harding County Board of Education, I may be considered as having a personal interest that affects or that would lead a reasonable person to refer that it affects my vote on the matter currently before the board. In accordance with the Tennessee Chapter number three oh one and Harding County Board of Education Policy one point one oh eight, I declare that my argument and my soul, my vote answers only to my constituents, or my conscience, I'm sorry, and to my obligation to my constituents and citizens this body represents. I certify, I certify that my vote shall be in the best interest of the school system.
All right, Ms. Ayler?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Reverend Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Oak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Okay, next, we'll move on to our resolutions and I'll send it over to Dr. Smith.
I want to thank everyone for their participation in the fall district meeting this week in Harding County. Um, we had some good explanations presented, and most of you have heard this, there's a lot of legal changes and legislative, um, topics that are out there that are a lot of concern to education. One of the things that super students have really been focusing on is the fact that there's so much out there, sometimes it can be, become very, you know, bogged down, and there's things still on the books from many, many years ago that really don't apply to today. And what this resolution does, a lot of districts are adopting it, it talks about how, it says whereas over many years, there's state and local governing bodies have created policies, practices, procedures, and other requirements that affect educators in Tennessee. While these requirements may have been well intended and in many cases helpful, Tennessee educators have been spending growing amounts of time, resources, and energy on these balonious, balonious requirements. Many requirements have outlived their usefulness and caused considerable collateral damage in many Tennessee schools, including driving excellent teachers out of the profession, undermining school commitment, and draining resources. It is given the violence, since the violence requirement on our educators needs must be lowered in order to foster engaging school experiences that promote joy of learning, depth of thought, and breadth of knowledge. Now let therefore be it resolved, the Harding County Board of Education calls on the governor, state legislator, and state education boards and administrators to establish a comprehensive, collaborative, and thoughtful review program of Tennessee laws, rules, regulations, and policies governing teachers to recommend improvements in reducing educator workloads to facilitate focus on the mission of educating Tennessee's children. What they're asking for, last legislative session, there were six hundred and eighteen new public chapter or amendments to education laws alone. They're asking for them to go back and completely do a review of all the legislation that touches education. And it's time for that because there are things that we're still bound to that were passed twenty years ago that's really not even applicable in today's world. So this resolution just, um, supports the review of the legislation in education today in Tennessee. Are there any questions on that resolution? Okay, the next one has to do with third grade retention, and we're going to actually see a policy in a minute. This has picked up tremendous steam in the last month. Um, basically, what it says in an nutshell is that the public chapter is, there on the left is public chapter three sixty-seven. Basically, it has some exceptions to it, but if a child does not score at expectation on ten ready, it says that they should or will be retained. Now, when we go through the policy, I'll give you exceptions to this, but this is statewide, and there's, um, not a lot of good principles to it, but there's a lot of additional work, and at this time, it is also a non-funded mandate. So, um, I think we're going to see some potential changes to this, but at the moment, we have to go with what we have and look at the way that the legislation is written. You can see that yesterday, or the day before, we sent out a letter on social media and on the website about the grading policy change, which we did a first reading on July, and about the third grade requirements. We have a plan to make a follow-up to this. What is encouraging students now, if they're struggling to get an exceeding school day services, we're planning parent contacts at each individual elementary school to make sure all third grade parents are aware of the law and aware of what's within this law. And then, you're going to see in the policy that there are a lot, a lot of things that our teachers and administrators are going to have to do because of this. What this resolution proposes is that it lists the minimal requirements to be considered for retaining. And, let's go back. Whereas the Harding County School Board of Education believes that retention decisions regarding children should be research-based, informed by multiple data sources, and include parental input, whereas the Tennessee State Board of Education's promotional retention policy lists the minimal factors to be considered for identifying students for retention. What is the ability to perform at current grade level standards, local assessment, screening, monitoring tools, state assessment, overall academic achievement, likelihood of success, attendance record, social and emotional maturity. The same Tennessee State Board of Education policy notes that retention shall be considered only when in the best interest of the students. Whereas retention may have adverse effects on students, including those with disabilities and at-risk students, whereas other states have adopted legislation regarding retention of third grade students, have included a provision allowing school districts to promote students not proficient in ELA as measured by standardized tests based on school district data demonstrating an understanding of ELA via alternative knowledge assessments. Now, so will be it resolved, and the Harding County Board of Education urges General Assembly to amend Tennessee Code of Retention forty-nine, six, thirty-one, fifteen, to allow school districts to make retention decisions for all students based on the totality of data, discussion of stakeholders, and the expertise of education professionals regarding the best interest of each child. Basically, the Tennessee State Board of Education policy and this legislation do not allow them feeling well. What this resolution asks for is that we have some other options become available within this law to help us make decisions on retention of third graders, including discussion, our benchmark assessments, and expertise of education professionals, and not based off one test day where a student may not be feeling well. Um, if, if a student doesn't follow some of the categories we're going to talk about in a few minutes, their third grade promotional retention can be based on one single test one day every year. So this, uh, resolution just asks for some amendments to the current legislation to allow districts more flexibility and more data to be used for students, not just that one test. So that is resolution, um, Tennessee Code of Retention forty-nine, six, thirty-one, fifteen.
Dr. Smith, as, as far as I know, I think this bill does not have a physical note attached to it, but if, if we retain students based on what they're saying, we're going to have to hire quite a few more third grade teachers after, after the grant.
That, we'll have to move some around each year. Um, it, it's a very difficult bill. What we will, what, what, what impacts us the most is, you'll see in a minute, one of the major issues, um, plays out is for what they call high, um, low? This rose, what is it? High and passing?
Low, low, uh, high ratio, low ratio, high dosage.
That's it. Uh, basically, what it relates to is that our student's school day tutoring in the afternoon will have to be a three to one ratio, three students per one teacher. It would take every teacher we have to do tutoring in the afternoon. So it's, um, there are a lot, lots and lots of issues with this. One of my greatest concerns along with some of the other neighboring districts, as we've spoken about it, is the fact that they can't answer a lot of our questions. We have said questions all the way up to change, trying to find out exactly what does adequate progress need, and we have yet to get inspiration. And, uh, someone else did another read out the other day, and basically, they were told an F A Q will come out soon, and they won't get two questions till then. This law has been on the books for, you know, almost six months, well, four months now, and they still don't have the detailed work out. That alone concerns me.
Dr. Smith, uh, based on current trends, the way, way we've been doing, uh, uh, do we have any idea how many students will be affected?
We do. It's a lot lower than you would expect. Uh, Mr. Rutherford has actually ran those numbers. Mr. Rutherford, you want to speak that?
I don't know the exact percentage, but if you're looking at the ones, if, with the provisions in place that either attend the summer school, the summer bridge camps, and/or the after-school tutoring, it will be a smaller percentage, but as Dr. Smith was saying, we have to get them in, and finding those tutors with that three to one, that is one of the requirements, the three to one, so without being able to fulfill that piece, the number will be much higher. But if we were able to meet that requirement of the three to one and the summer academy, summer bridge camps, the number would not be quite as high?
I understand.
So we're recommending that we, um, pass these resolutions supporting a review of what's placed along, and also the amendments to the promotion retention legislation.
And, Dr. Smith, any more questions on those two resolutions? Unless anybody has a opposed, uh, say we just go ahead and vote on both of them together. So I hear a motion, we approve retention for third, resolutions for retention for third and fourth grades, and also the resolutions review and correction of requirements on these categories. So, motion made by Reverend Chris.
I second.
Second by Miss Carter. Any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, along with that, we're going to have a first reading, uh, of the update to Policy four point six zero three. And this, we're sure this might need to be a first reading, because as you're going to see, there are a lot of changes to, that have been proposed by T S B A, and it allows the requirement specific to this third grade promotion. Um, I'm going to get on to that. One of the things we have to do now is notify our families before February first if they're in the possibility of student retention, and it has to be based on these seven things according to the Tennessee State Board of Education, and then add along with us these reports, which we already did. In addition, there has to be promotion plans in place, and if you will look through there, you see a lot of, um, dates, for example, thirty calendar days. When we get to, let me find it. When we get to February, each child that has been notified for potential retention has to have their own promotion plan in place. The parents have to come in, the teachers have to work with them, they put a plan together, and work through that, motivate the progress throughout the remainder of the year, and it has to be modified if they're not making progress. Um, and then at the end, they have to be notified ten days prior to the beginning of the next school year. If a student was in the summer program, and if they weren't, we have to be notification thirty days prior to the school year. So they're adding some, um, actual days on here as to when we have to do things. I will say as well, with this third, this third grade requirement, what are the options, as you can see on this paper at the bottom, is that a student attends a long-term bridge camp before the next school year, maintains the, which is the attendance rate, and demonstrate adequate growth on the post-test. What this piece along says is that a child that may have been retained, or should be retained, can go to summer school. They'll have to take a pre-test at the beginning of the summer school and at the end, and demonstrate adequate growth. Now, adequate growth is what we can't get an answer on what that is, but it's not just the fact that they go to summer school and you want them, it's that they're actually going to have to show growth. So that's one of the things that, that could be a barrier to some students. Some of the other options for students being able to be promoted is if they're in which lines was learned, and they've had less than two years of ELA, uh, if the student is pretty well-retained in grade category, or if they're retested before the next school year and score proficient in ELA. So if a student has a bad day, or they feel like they could have been out of expectation, that student can retest. Or then they can attend summer school and have to show adequate growth. So those are the ways that decisions for retention of a third grade are going to be made according to this legislation. They also have to, like, um, receive tutoring for the next school year, and then it's also built on about any fourth grade. It says a student who is promoted to the fourth grade due to receiving tutoring must be able to show adequate growth on the fourth grade team camp, or they will not be promoted to fifth grade. So this moves from third grade to fifth grade. If they get through the things that they need to do in third grade and don't continue that growth in fourth grade, they're basically back in the same situation. So this can have a huge impact on a lot of students. There's a lot of research out there about retention. So this, this again has, there's a lot of controversy in it, and there's also a lot of unknown. Hopefully, in the, at the fall, if we're going to get more information on this. But it is picking up traction, however, at this moment, it is legislation, and we do need to update this policy to follow that legislation. Again, this is a first reading, and we really need to dissect this one over the next month and look at it. It is T S B A recommendation, so it is, um, aligned to the current legislation. It also goes into appeals. Parents can appeal this, but they're, we will probably need someone on staff just to keep up with these days. Parents have so many days to do an appeal, we have so many days to go to hearing, we have so many days to issue a promoted decision, accept, and then it can go to the State Department of Education. Um, at this time, I think it can go straight to the State Department of Education, which in my opinion is about where it should go. So, um, they have appeal processes in here, and, um, let's see. Yeah, that's the whole appeal process. So again, a lengthy policy that, um, we need to be aware of, but also know, we, we have to move forward with educating our parents of this, but I do feel like there could be some changes to it in the spring. The bad thing is that we won't go until the legislative finishes, starts back in January. So that is our first reading.
Any questions on, on that policy? Okay, Dr. Smith, you want to just run through the second reading of those that we had last month?
I will.
Real quick.
We went through these in, in-depth last month, so I was going to kind of give you a quick summary of each one and a reminder of what they were. The board members' legal status, we had to, uh, incorporate the number of members, and also we added the qualified voter of Renziell County for one year prior to voting for it as candidate. And then as to its memberships of the board, um, at this time, we do not have to become an affiliate member of, um, Southern Region School Board Association or the National School Board Association. That legislation was amended by T S B A in terms of our membership. School board legislation, legislative involvement, um, add a community group to create public awareness for supportive legislative priorities, change the C L M representative, wording to legislative representative. For role member development opportunities, it just, this is just one of the times, um, to ensure compliance with the file of professional development for both members. And then also adds a public will be kept informed through youth media about the board's continuing in-service education and programs to anticipate for short and long-range benefits of the students. This would be our school improvement plan and five-year strategic plan. We urgently prepared this plan. This one was a wording change and added the remote learning drill. We have to have a virtual remote learning drill each year, we do not have to actually go through it, but we have to, um, make sure that everyone's trained, including the students on what we do if we were to go to a remote lab. Even though we don't have virtual, this is still a piece of legislation. Instructional standards, this policy regards complaints, um, if parents or stakeholders have, um, questions or concerns about instructional standards, they have complaints, uh, processes regarding teaching from heavy concepts and violations of state law. Credit recovery, we changed this one simply due to the sixty percent grading scale change that the state mandated in way of after grade two through twelve. Virtual education, um, allows us to be able to continue education services when we utilize remote instruction due to dangerous or extreme learning conditions, outbreak of illness of taking any major students during administration of criminal courts or other examinations of the law per state law. Again, all this is a radical change. Reconsideration of textbook instructional materials. This one, um, says it adds an actual date, government date, in case we have material challenge, we have to have a review committee within twenty working days. This is a lottery policy. Uh, again, if they want a material review, we have twenty days to respond to that. Use of the internet adds complaint posing a violation of internet safety measures, shall be, shall be submitted to the principal. Principal will then contact active to research the incident. All complaints shall be reviewed at the time and have to appropriately respond. And also adds in the contracts, internet usage filed to entering into any contract for the provision of digital or online materials created on market is kindergarten for twelfth grade. The district shall obtain assurance that the vendor shall adhere to state law. This is a combination of ensuring that the vendor filters, blocks, or otherwise prevents access to pornography or obscenity, and verifying that the technology prevents you from sending, receiving, viewing, or downloading materials that are harmful to minors. This is the employment of retirees, this is the, um, the second reading of a new policy of legislation, um, regarding retirees. We can still have a hundred and forty-day employment contract. It also gives the option for those, the three, um, options for retirement. A teacher can come back and teach at seventy percent of retirement and a hundred percent teaching, or they can do eighty percent of retirement, one hundred percent teaching and eighty percent retirement. So they've added three options for retired teachers to come back and teach. Attendance, this, um, removes the option or the requirement that we used to have that allowed students to have the passing, and at least three subjects that say that they did not get their doctor's license, so this removes that requirement. Attendance and honor that states, um, allows us to take students from another state and possibly have application prior to the first day of school. This is a new policy as well because of the, um, open enrollment. Uh, this is for suspended or expelled students. It adds for the webs that use of all someone employed by, previously employed by, or otherwise affiliated with school, to report maybe, may directly to V C S and law enforcement prior to notifying a coordinator. In the past, they haven't notified a coordinator too. This just changes that avenue of responsibility. It also specifically adds commodity to the Department of Children's Services. So those are for the second readings of several policies, and all of those are T S B A recommendations, and they all came out of the screen, the hundred and twelve, um, general, I think, rule of the legislation. Any questions on any of those?
Did everyone go over all these?
Did they?
Miss Owens, yeah, Miss Owens.
She did go through all of them, because these come directly from being in T S B A. There was, um, I think it was a little bit more, and I have to go back to look if we see it, Carter. But what we do is, um, then sends them to T S B A headquarters, and then the department here, whichever one's applicable, review them as well. If we see that there's, we look at two things. One, we look at laws, is it required? And two, is it applicable to our district if it's not law? So they kind of, the department here is looking at those and then, um, make recommendations on the learning. But I'm, sort of, the majority leaning to strike for T S B A.
Any questions, and does anybody want to point anything out, and hold on, on one thing in particular? No, I'll entertain a motion, we approve all sixteen, uh, policy changes on the second reading.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Miss Carter.
Second.
Second by Mr. King. Any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Before we move any further, the meeting kind of started a little unorthodox, but I will, I bow to mention Mr. Pope down here, he's our new board member here tonight. He was recently elected, he's already been put into duty, he went with us to Harding County, uh, last night, so, or night before last, so he's already got his feet back before we got to his first board meeting, but Mr. Pope, we're glad to have you on board with us.
Thank you, glad to be on board.
Next, we'll go into our votes. Next, we'll go into our budgets, our committee reports, and the first one is the budget, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. King.
All right, first uh one we have is the C T Perkins Federal Budget. Um and this is a federal portion of our vocational educational program. Uh actually, the allocation is twenty-three thousand, almost twenty-four thousand dollars lower than last year, which is good. Uh and this pays for teacher assistant and culinary arts classes and for most of the equipment. The amount of ninety-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. If you have any questions, please talk to us. Next is the uh math implementation grant. Uh this is a grant for seventy-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and had to grant to work with state approved vendors. Uh basically, instructing the teachers, math teachers under the instructional materials is what this is for, this is a grant. Next is um. It's Fed Department, uh one forty-one, move money around as we transition to new Fed director, we've got a new Fed director. Uh and where she's moving from will not be revealed, uh so we're moving that money around into the third book. Uh a lot of hers, the system was be taking care of her third book. Next is um uh Spark Grant. Uh it's carryover dollars from last year, uh these support post-secondary access real communities, providing uh a day to pivot and improve high school, and this is basically for the automatic spending of central high school. Three thousand one hundred point seven nine. Next, there uh coordinated school health, uh there was some change of benefits to one of the employees, so um that had moved money around there. Uh had to decrease the health insurance. Next, uh one forty-one, um. Let me remember what this was, uh this is, is an adjustment to pick up. Uh there was part of a salary that an employee missed. They thought was coming out of extra funds, but it didn't, so had to move this out of uh fund balance to cover that portion of employee's salary. And extra funds only covered half of of that salary, so this is moved around and corrected, it's just something that was missed in the original budget.
And that, that'll have to go to the county commission, but not the state, and since we are arguing how to fund that.
All right, then, the last one we have here is uh just an adjust, adjusting the final allocation. Uh uh in the original general purpose, however, we didn't have, didn't have a final allocation. This is the final allocation, a difference of two hundred and sixty-five dollars. Uh to correct that there. Just all our candidates, unless there's some questions.
Dr. Smith, did you want to add anything to those seven budget limits?
I think you covered it all. And that last one, I'm the supervisor director, now, uh there's a lot of people in there, that's not the person.
Right.
Okay.
It's recommendations, basically.
Comes as recommendations, which is not required, second. Any discussion on any one of those? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um next, we have our committee reports. Um, Dr. Smith, do you have any, there's some on here, let me just start, let me back up again. The committees that I appoint, it's up here with everybody, I'm gonna wait and appoint them next month, just to make sure we don't want to change anybody around and change anything up. If you would like to be on a certain committee that you're not on, and we get off the one you're on, just let me know and uh we'll go that direction. Sometimes I think it's um a good idea to kind of mix everybody up sometimes and change, so everybody can kind of stay with the budget committees all the time, insurance and so forth. But then again, everybody's got so comfortable and so knowledgeable in those categories, almost takes the change, and so if you want to move, just let me know, and we'll appoint those next month. Dr. Smith, do you want to go over the ones that are appointed by the board, let's see, talk to us.
I will, um we're required to have several committees at school level. One being complaint managers, and you can see on the left there for each school, uh there's a male and a female listed. These people, now, these are parent complaint managers, these offer students to go to the event they have um issues such as bullying or other things that they need to report, these people are trained into the um school level complaint manager. This year, we have the math textbook adoption coming up, as you know, it's a year-long process. It will begin around November and run until we um adopt in probably April. So each one of the schools has appointed one or four people to the math textbook committee, Michelle Howard will do the chair functions for that committee. And we also have um this year, an administrator on the committee, and two instructional coaches, and three parent representatives. So uh we have a really good um variety there of people that can provide us input for our math textbook committee. And again, that's, we have to choose from what the state allows us to choose from, it's not that we can go out and just do what we want to do. The other committee we have is disciplinary hearing authority that's each um, we nominated Jeff Barnes, we nominated for chair functions of that. And then we have several um, a couple of principals, the district office staff, and other administrators assigned to this disciplinary hearing authority. So those are the three committees that are at the district and school level that we need um, we recommend for the school year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Now, I hear a motion that we approved the complaint managers, man, I need one of those in my job, a complaint manager. How do you get a complaint manager, how do you know that? Uh but we're going to approve the complaint manager, the textbook committee, and also the disciplinary hearing committee. Now, your motion.
So moves.
Motion made by Reverend Kreis, because they're second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ross, any questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. One quick thing before we go into your reports, Dr. Smith, I would like to go ahead and put Mr. Pope on the insurance committee uh for right now until next month, and now if anything comes up, uh he can serve in that capacity, so. Okay, Dr. Smith, it's all yours.
Thank you. All right, uh a little data for you, I mean updated student enrollment numbers, this was added of all the thirty first. We are now thirty-two students from the same time last year. We're seeing smaller classes coming in, um it's not necessarily more limited to being part grade, but the kind of our classes that are coming in are of the size of the class grade classes that are graduating. So um we are now thirty students, we, we hope to continue to do great things so people will look before our college campuses. T box has been released at our last meeting, uh if you recall, it was actually scheduled to be released the day after our last meeting. So now to present that data, and then tomorrow, there's another release, so I can not have it for a night, but tomorrow, we will get identification. So the schools will be identified as either um in good standing, reward, targeted, or compulsory. And the district walks on either a satisfactory or negative approval. But you can see the T box levels there, there um, some schools dropped, some schools went up, overall, the average is still about to change. We have work to do, and some of the things that we're doing and starting are on the left. Um one is that we're focusing on rate level and subject level score ranges, so the teachers know where kids are. We are doing training with T box, which is our growth measurement model, we are starting with administrators, and we're working our way down to teachers. If they don't understand the data or know how to use the data, it's no good for them. So we're doing this in like two and three hour training sessions, instead of um one day, take this and go back. We're doing it little bit at a time and making sure we fully understand and that everybody understands and uses the T box methodology and data information. We have several areas that we have identified that were particularly concerning for test scores, and what we're doing, we have identified an evaluation tool to look at those curriculums and number one, see if they align to the standards, and two, make sure that we're scaffolding what we need to for our students to successfully master that curriculum. We've added three part-time one hundred and twenty-day instructional coaches, all three of them are retired educators. And we have one specifically for, for my, a high school math, and then one for elementary and middle school E L A, and one for math, so. Um they've already been out of the schools looking at data, working with teachers, and we think that's going to be a really good, good thing for teachers to have as a resource. And also, you can data-driven focus in E O C, we're going to look at an assessment that will help us identify where students are throughout the year in their E O C courses so that we can measure progress. Um in the past, we've kind of been doing a lot of, because that's where we got those school effects, so we're looking at ways to monitor that progress throughout the year.
Dr. Smith, a question please.
Yes.
Is, is it from year to year, is it common for there to be such a gap on a school going from a either one or to five, or five to one? It just seems like a, a large gap, is that common?
Unfortunately, it is common, um I can go back, I will send you the, the stores, I think I have them for like the last six years. And you'll see a lot of that for the block, and I don't, I don't know if they get comfortable sometimes, or there's lots of reasons for it, in my opinion. Just like there's lots of reasons for stores, but that is really not uncommon. And typically, we have some schools that if they, they do fail track before it that far, and then we have some that don't have a lot of movement, but they're already stated. So it's, it's not uncommon. And one of the things I will say too, and this is public information, it's on the T box, they're signed on the State Department of Education. You can go in and look at any school um in the state, actually, this one is public, because I'm a public record knowledge. And you'll see a lot of districts this time that were five, that are typically nowhere close to a five. And I, I believe part of that was a lot of controversy around that. And what happened was, we were supposed to be giving definitions of A, B, C, or D for each school. And that was supposed to come out about three years ago, and the day before that data was going to be released, it got dropped. And it was not longer released. So there's still a lot of question out there about some of this, we saw, we saw some inconsistencies, but I think across the state, they saw some inconsistencies as well. But in our district, typically, no, that's not uh very uncommon.
Okay.
Dr. Smith, how much of this do you um think COVID has caused, is this a?
I don't think COVID had anything to do with this, this is strictly growth.
Okay.
Now proficiency and achievement, yes, it definitely impacted that, and all the data that we have, including our report assessments and our state assessments, show that we are, this year, we got back to where we were pre-COVID. We had a significant drop last year, and we're back to where we were when we went out in twenty.
Okay.
This, all of this information you have here, this is T box, G N C value added assessment system, it only looks at growth. So it looks at where students were last year when they took the test, and where they were at the end of this past school year, this year to year. It also compares them to students across the state in a lot of situations. So what this says is, and we found this, we had a very low H trait D L A achievement, but we had five in growth. So our H traiters outperformed more, out, outgrew more H trait students until they were up there. It's a, it's a very difficult, that's why we're spending so much time in these smaller sections, relearning data, and we're getting reaccoladed to things. Because it is difficult and complex. But what these show is how we grew from year to year, and in comparison to other schools and other students in that light setting across the state.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
You're welcome. Any other questions on academics? We have some great things in plan, and in plan for this, um it's exciting what we can do with some of our academic programs. Home to Capital Outlay, this is a recap of things that we have completed, a lot of this is from uh H R funds. Well, Ballard Elementary has new H trap systems, we replaced several with other schools too. We have replaced roofs at Ballard Elementary, Milton High School, Central High School too, and as you can see, hopefully this week we'll have a new one here, it will be easier to bucket even longer. Um alleys are complete at Milton Elementary, Whitley, Grand Junction, and Ballard Mill. Ballard Elementary has uh things that they needed to do for dropping ceilings around those pipes, that has been completed. We have completed asphalt parking at Milton High School, Grand Junction, Ballard Elementary, and Central. Um Central High School auditorium had four units on top of it that were five tons each, and guess how many tons the ductwork was certified to handle? Five ton period. So you can imagine what happened, and all the crews went out and we had to ductwork them. We also have through the cop strand, a new camera system at Ten Elementary, Woodfield, and Milton Elementary. All of those things have been completed, uh Randy M. have done a really great job getting office done quickly. Uh here's a project that are in progress, or that we still have to begin. We have some, we see a tile at the old gym at Milton High School, are literally falling down, so we're replacing those and repainting that roof. Um Whitley Elementary is getting new winters, um lots of cafeteria floors going in. Uh I think the only two schools that are not getting those are Milton Elementary and Whitley, and that was because they're really new. Ballard Elementary is getting an intercol system through the cop strands, and the renovation of Hope Street Building, Whitley Ridge has that. They are writing the bid spec, it is supposed to go out to be the first of October. And anticipated via the boards, once we go through and review it, it should be around the first of November.
Dr. Dr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
On the uh Whitley building, connecting the buildings, I, I've noticed that the work has stopped, was there a problem with that?
Um I will have to check on that, they still like the wood, that window being right.
Right, sun.
They need to be alert for a right. I will check on it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on past projects? Uh I have a partnership for each school, the school system, and we have a very wonderful resource in Harvard County Community Health Center and the school clinic at Ballard Elementary. This offers sports physical, six visits, um well child exams, lab tests, minor injuries. And of course, now our bus drivers can go get their D O T physicals there for free. But that is a service that is available to all our employees and students. Communities and schools, um actually, it's about two years ago this time, we had Ms. Sherry Bull and Mr. Montreal Williams come in and talk about what they did with communities and schools. And we are proud to announce that we have added a third school this year to communities and schools, and that's Whitley Elementary. So now we have some of our staff at Central, Milton High School, and Whitley that are employed by the Communities and Schools Consortium. And there's some information there on how many counties they're in, they're in tw- uh fifteen counties and twenty-three schools. Um twenty-three rural schools, thirty-six total, but we have three out of the twenty-three rural schools with communities and schools. And about an hour ago, I received notifications that Ms. Sherry Bull has won the All-In for Kids Site Coordinator, National Award winner for twenty-twenty-two out of all the, the um so, communities and schools coordinators. So we appreciate all the hard work she has put into that. We have been working with a lot of law enforcement lately, um one of the groups that came to, that we've flirted with about a month and a half, maybe two months ago, with homeland security. Part of the governor's executive order for safety and security hangs with um an increase in personnel contingency safety and homeland security. Part of the governor's executive order for safety and security hangs with, um, an increase in personnel for testing safety in Homeland Security. Basically, they have a five-member team for all of rest in the city, which is not a lot of people, or as many schools as there are. But they are dedicated to schools and school assessments. And we have met with, um, the representatives assigned to us many, many times, even, we've met with them many times prior to last week. But we have that partnership with them, and they have been a tremendous resource that has come through that executive order. But one of the things they pushed out, that we have pushed out on social media and the students, is called, um, Safety Union. And what it is, is it's a anonymous way to report, um, concerns and help prevent violence in our schools and communities. This is for community, too, it is not just school. But we did put, uh, push that out. In addition, uh, last Friday, we recorded a meeting with, um, a lot of law enforcement partnerships, including Baller BD, the Sheriff's Department, FBI, Homeland Security, juvenile authorities. And we all sat down at the table and, um, kind of did, uh, an assessment review and discussed concerns, and we're going to continue to have that need and continue to do that on a regular basis. Some of the things that we have done for, as far as reviewing everything, and most of this prior to last week, but we made it show back and think, ha, make sure everything was in place. We have safety and security assessments that have been completed and approved since, um, the end of G.I.O., so all that's been done. Those are very detailed assessments. Literally from how, how many feet a bush is from a window. So all of those were assessed and approved. Each school has its own crisis plan and emergency plan in place. At the beginning of the year, we made sure that our group's seventeen was upskilled and re-skilled to what they're supposed to be. We reviewed their responsibilities and team members. Had principal were aware of that. We probably have one hundred percent S.R.O. coverage. Um, this is the first time we started schools with a hundred percent S.R.O. coverage. We've also done an analysis of, uh, safety measures with Homeland Security, and they're coming back multiple times to help us continue this. Some of the things that we've looked at, you know, it's, um, there's no single strategy, or even a combination of strategies that can one hundred percent guarantee safety or anything, or any other act of violence. Your last, a bit of last night, couple of calories over, so that you just never know what your face is. But some of the things we've looked at, there's two things that they told us to really keep in mind. One, people out back there were locked doors and barricade doors. And that is the one thing that they recommend that you don't do. You're supposed to lock them, but not barricade them, because if emergency personnel, if you get in that room, they can't get in if it's barricaded. So it's almost like one of those things, every time you think of one thing, there's a way around it or something else. But we're looking at all those types of things to see, to make sure, see what else we can do. Um, we did a assessment immediately last week of Central High School, and found very few things that didn't, that needed fixing, actually, very, very few. So we feel good about the, the physical safety places, um, in terms of doors, entrances, inside the rooms, things, the plans that we have in place to deal with that. We are looking at things like metal detectors, and if you could research that, you will find codes and cons on both sides. Um, one of the, the cons, and we heard this last year, the Paul T.S.D.A. D., the guy that spoke about the Keddie incident. He said he would never put in a metal detector again, because he created a, a bottle that of students that they came apart and got outside the building trying to get in. And that becomes an issue as well, because we're looking at metal detectors, but we're gonna have to be creative and make sure the students are in a safe spot to get through those, or get into those. So there's, there's not, there's not a quick, easy fix, but we are examining a lot of these different things. We're examining locks on doors. Part of our capital improvement plan has, um, is going to replace windows. Any window that will replace will be what they call a security window. It will be able to be open as an exit and a egress of opportunity. So there's things that we're looking at, um, in, in a lot of Homeland Security. And it's literally one of those things where you can find codes and cons of everything. So finding the thing that's what promotes people, um, I'm actually in the pro- process of reading the Ball Day report for the second time to see what they did and if happens was. So that's where we're all with safety. As we've gone through all this, what we really thought about, too, is we do not have anybody that's dedicated to safety and security. And there's a lot to it, there's a lot of compliance, there's a lot of training that goes with it. We have officers from three different agencies providing S.R.O. coverage. They don't all have the same rules. Um, I, the S.R.O. rules are the same, but their department rules may not be. So making sure that they're on the same page, um, making sure it's communication-wise, or clear, and it becomes absolutely paramount. And one of the things that we talked about is looking into possibly getting a school safety coordinator. And this person will actually be responsible for completing the safety assessment, the crisis plan, reviewing safety plans, uh, conducting drills, type assessments, um, also be an F.R.I. coordinator, in the event that we needed all that F.R.I.s at one campus immediately. He would be the, he or she would be the one to do that. They would be responsible for training. And, uh, also be our Homeland Security liaison. Homeland Security has become one of our greatest partners in terms of, of guidance and help for this type of resource. They have found us the resources that we did not know were out there, and it had nothing to do with security. It had to do with, um, some other issues, but they've been a great resource. But we can actually, uh, do do as much as federal funds that we have. So in the next few weeks, we're probably going to put this out and see if we can get something, um, get applications on this. And this would also, this person will be based in one of the schools, or multiple, um, flexible schools, move from school to school, and be a second S.R.I. in, in the facility, so. That's something we're looking at for the federal programs, and if we get to the point, we feel like this is go, and we can find that person, and we'll bring it, um, to support budget. And all the negativity we're dealt with, uh, last week, there are good things happening in our schools. Uh, tomorrow, we have a meeting, Dr. Miss Amy McKay, she is the host of Team Dream Rescue Innovation. A licensed contractor and an industry advocate for construction, and she is going to kick off a construction program for the renovated hospital grant. She will be sticking to Central High School, Baller Mill School, and Milton High School tomorrow. And then she will be coming back later in the year, welcoming second graders and with our construction program, so we're excited to kick off the implementation of our renovated hospital grants we have with McKay, Cleveland. Here are some things that some of our students have been doing since they retired the school in August. Um, Board Leader Gary was working with erosion, they built powder oven, and they learned how to do scientific community. Grand Junction's, uh, host of Grandparent's Day, and also put out several reminders about parent teacher conferences that were held this week. This is Whiteville Elementary, they were having a fifth-grade book club. Core Civic brought supplies and materials to teachers. They had a science project in the lab. And on the left, you see Officer Howe, which was one of the Tennessee State Troopers. And as you know, at, from now on, governor has, uh, basically told every trick, we're doing all the policies that schools are supposed to stop. So I'm gonna call those schools that have been visited, and we appreciate them stopping by to check over. They also walk around and do security checks without us knowing, and come in and see if there were any breaches. So that's another level of security we have available to us. On the right, that's my favorite, that's a free cake, uh, baby at Whiteville Elementary, can stop calling my own, it's just my first day of preschool. And they also had a community back school lab, that included vouchers, block community back practice rooms. So lots of good community action there. Um, Central High School had parent teacher conferences on Tuesday, but they also had, um, grill hot dogs, carry empty fun, and the auditorium. Parents could come in and sign up for T-Pat, and often to sign up for new parent view. And lots of other fun things with their club displays, as well as talking to teachers. The first football game, they also went to Bellberry School and greeted those students, and they arrived for school that morning. Now, behind a guest speaker, um, Francisco Wannlock, who was paralyzed in an accident, and he came to talk to students about distracted driving. Uh, Central also has sign-ups to be on NFHSnetwork.com. It is a paid subscription that you didn't do, but they, um, share most of their sports on that now. They're doing football, volleyball, and basketball games, so that's a pretty neat thing to find. And we're also starting to develop an A.C.T. plan. We put this out to all students, provide them, uh, what I call A.C.T. workshop. But we're also planning some A.C.T. camps for our kids. And those are gonna be not traditional, it's not nobody come and take an A.C.T. practice camp. We're gonna make it fun, have movie nights and things like that available to students, to help them better prepare for A.C.T. Baller Elementary had a lot going on. Um, at the top left, they had a, uh, what do you call it, escape room. About the first day of awards, so those students escaped the, the escape room. We had students to also receive supplies and materials from Core Civic, so we appreciate their partnership. We had, uh, no one watched the building. And on the right, they had top people for the virtual, see if they had good behavior from P.B.G.I.A. They also had, um, cheap way of buying stuff from the fire department to talk to them about career readiness. And all the things that should be involved with his careers in, within the fire department, so they're, um, practicing their future-ready career awareness there. And we had some little lines and pictures and emojis and free cakes, and there's some slime makers at the top right. So there are great things going on, uh, really. Um, we appreciate all the work and all the partnerships that we had this last month. And all the partnerships that we continue to build and to work on. And we're extremely excited by opportunities and teachers. Any questions on either end of the directory report? Come on, there's a meeting.
Thanks, Doctor Smith. Does anybody else have anything to bring up before we adjourn? Not I, it's him, Mr. Dean, Senator, uh, Sabre, Mr. Ross. All in favor say aye.